Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's public hearing for today, Wednesday, September 4th, 2022, as it relates to Bill 0592. So to start the public hearing, I am Councilman Kraus. I will be chairing. Today we'll be joined by Deputy Director Dash. If you're welcome, as you're comfortable, to come to the table. We are also joined by Councilwoman Strausberger, our newly appointed city clerk, Kim Clark. And with that, Madam Clerk, may we begin with reading the purpose of the bill?
Bill 592, in ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX zoning code, Article One zoning map, Article Two base zoning district, Chapter 904 mixed-use districts, Article Four planning districts, Chapter 908 public realm districts, Article Five use regulations, Chapter 911 primary uses, Section 911.02 use table, and Section 911.04 use standards, Article Six development standards, Chapter 914 parking loading and access, Chapter 915 environmental performance standards, and Chapter 919 signs, Article Eight review and enforcement, Chapter 922 development review procedures, and Article Nine, Chapter 926 definitions to create three new base zoning districts and other zoning amendments.
Good. Madam Clerk, thank you so very much. We are joined by Deputy Director Dash, and I believe our zoning administrator Cory Lehman is online?
Yes, and Kate Rakers. The zoning and development review staff is on as well. Kate and I will be, I think, giving most of the background and presentation as just an introduction to the bill and, you know, why we're here with you all today.
We're here. The ultimate question, why are we here?
Yes.
Hi, Kate. Hi Cory, welcome. Nice to see you, even though it's virtual. It's good. So Deputy Director Dash, do you have a presentation for us?
We do, yes. And if Kate wants to bring that up and...
I have it loaded. Let me share here.
So while Kate's bringing that up, I mean, the reason that we wanted to be able to, you know, we want to be able to walk through the entirety of the bill. Bill is creating, you know, as the clerk said, three new base zoning districts and applying them in Oakland. This is related to the work, if we go to the next slide, of the Oakland Plan, which is, you know, a two-and-a-half-year effort that was... I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, will you repeat that? I don't want to over-speak you, but it's related to the Oakland Plan because there appears to be some confusion that we are actually considering the totality of the Oakland Plan today. We are not. We are considering these suggested zoning amendments.
That is correct. And so the Oakland Plan, as, you know, the planning processes on the screen here was roughly two-and-a-half-year planning process, which did conclude with the Planning Commission adopting the Oakland Plan, you know, at the same time they did hear these related zoning amendments. And we'll talk through the relation of the plan to these zoning amendments. But the zoning amendments, you know, are, you know, an implementation action of the Oakland Plan that we're bringing to City Council, you know, for their consideration and hopefully approval.
Perfect.
So if we go to the next slide, you know, as we have led up to, you know, where we are with you all today, there have been both engagement and public comment on the plan and the zoning after they were released. So we did have a two-month public comment process that occurred both on this first phase of the zoning amendments that's before City Council for consideration, as well as the Oakland Plan, which was ultimately adopted by the Planning Commission. You know, in that period of time, had a series of open houses, had online engagement through the city's online engagement platform, EngagePGH, you know, met with the individual steering committee members, you know, community members, you know, between Stephanie Joy Everett and I, who was working as the neighborhood planner to conclude the plan. And, you know, in this period of time, I think we had between 55 and 60 individual meetings with stakeholders, in addition to the online engagement that happened through the EngagePGH platform and the emails and letters that we've received and that you all have continued to receive. If we go to the next slide, just what that means by the numbers. We did receive, in that public comment period, 150 public comments that were specifically on the zoning proposals that are coming to you all, you know, for consideration. And, you know, with the next few slides, we'll just walk through the land use strategy in the plan and how that relates to the zoning amendments that we're bringing forward. You know, so one of the pieces of the Oakland Plan was a look at the land uses in Oakland. And so, you know, looking at, you know, not only, you know, the land uses as they exist in Oakland, but through the two years of, two-and-a-half years of public process, wanted to be able to express a future land use plan, you know, that is really the way that the goals of the plan are expressed through the development, you know, through development that we'll see in the next 10 years. And so, you know, obviously, there was a lot of feedback and communication as a part of this process with, you know, things like the Oakland Community Land Trust, for example, as, you know, as a way in which, you know, things started to take place, as well as, you know, the development again that we project to see over the 10 years, which were a part of the planning process, and the economic development and housing studies that were associated with that. You know, and we'll come back to this slide at the end. We do have the current zoning proposal that is coming forward to you all, which is primarily for the Fifth Forbes Corridor, for the Boulevard of the Allies in central Oakland. However, in enacting the future land use map, there will be expected future rezonings that we'll be working with the Oakland community on, looking at areas like North Oakland, primarily, you know, around Craig Street and the mixed-use areas there, looking at the employment area, which was really defined through the plan for the Melwood, you know, for the Melwood area, north of Baum Boulevard, and looking at some changes to residential zoning as well. But we weren't as far along in the discussions on those pieces, so those will come to council at a future point in time. And, you know, are unassociated with this proposal, but related in that the plan did make those as suggestions. And so just to, I'll try to quickly fly through these next few slides. Around housing, and this gets to the proposed RMU district. There was an area in central Oakland that was looked at for higher density residential, you know, then, you know, was currently, you know, under the zoning. Looking at how we incorporate potential new multifamily zoning into a place that has a pretty broad varied character presently. And, you know, there are historic homes in this area, as well as multifamily structures currently. And, you know, in trying to look at, you know, how we incorporate different types of urban design and mixed use into, you know, into that area of central Oakland was something that we looked for with the RMU district. If we move to the next slide, you know, again, you know, similarly, in, you know, in this area, you know, looking at areas where the density might be a little lower, but, you know, that still the uses were pretty interspersed. We do have commercial uses on places like Bates and Semple Streets here presently, so wanted to make sure that we're accommodating and enhancing those into the future. And, you know, and trying to understand how, you know, the land uses that are coming through in the zoning, you know, ultimately relate to a lot of the desires that people put through the planning process for expanded open spaces, for other types of amenities, you know, which is why when, you know, Kate talks later, we'll talk about the performance point system and its relationship to these districts. You know, moving on to the next, I'll just, you know, I won't touch on this much just because these are areas that aren't a part of the zoning proposal, but there was, or areas kind of preserved. We look at places like Oak Cliff or Shenley Farms or some of those places where there is an assumption that there is some lower residential uses that will continue in Oakland over time. And if we move to the next one, you know, which we start to look at employment. There are some areas of the neighborhood that the plan identified as really, you know, employment center uses. And, you know, thinking about the Fifth and Forbes Corridor and their relationship to, you know, the commercial activity, the institutional activity, the tech and other activity that goes on in that, and really trying to think about ways to increase the density in those areas and allow for further development of those areas as the innovation district. And, you know, in addition to the Fifth and Forbes Corridor, like I said, there is a small area that, you know, also if we look at Melwood, you know, north of Baum Boulevard and the uses there, that was another place where this innovation district land use was applied. And then moving on to the mixed-use areas, you know, again, you know, what we're here primarily to talk about is the urban center mixed-use, the UCMU district in and around the Boulevard of the Allies. So, you know, this is, you know, providing a really broad variety of a mixed-use district. You know, was really the land use strategy in this. And that, you know, the heights were different in some of these. When we looked at, you know, places like Craig Street, really, there was probably, you know, an appetite for up to nine stories in that area. But looking at the Boulevard of the Allies, which the proposal before council includes, you know, that we are looking for taller, you know, taller buildings in some areas, you know, where, you know, to allow for dense, a dense mixed-use district along the Boulevard of the Allies. With that, you move to the Planning Commission public hearing. You know, like you noted, Councilman, you know, the Planning Commission did adopt the plan, the Oakland Plan, at, you know, you know, back in May. They did make a positive recommendation to City Council with a series of conditions. And when Kate walks through the zoning proposal, she walked through what those conditions were and how we satisfied those conditions in the proposal that was brought to City Council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kate Rakers of our zoning and development review staff, and she's really going to walk through the proposal that is before you all at City Council. Thanks, Kate.
Thank you. Deputy Director Dash, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. So the meat of what we are going to be talking about today is three new base zoning districts. UCE, which is the urban center employment. UCMU, which is the urban center mixed-use. And RMU is residential mixed-use. So that's the sort of biggest area to be rezoned. There's also a small rezoning for several city-owned parks that are going to be rezoned to P as parks. So the existing public realm districts, the Oakland Public Realm District A for Atwood, C for Fifth and Forbes, and D for Boulevard of the Allies are proposed to be rezoned. So these would be removed from the zoning code. But as of right now, and Deputy Director Dash talked a little bit about future rezonings, the OPRB North Frank will remain for now. With this zoning change to the new base zoning districts, the heights, the maximum heights are separate from the zoning district. So they don't necessarily follow the zoning district boundaries. And we have, the new base zoning districts use our existing performance point system in Chapter 915, which allows bonus heights. And as part of this amendment, we are adding options for new bonus points, amending some existing, and also including prerequisites that have to be met prior to using the performance point system just for these UCE, UCMU, and RMU. And we'll see that a little bit later. So just taking a quick look at the existing zoning, I won't dwell on these slides. We can go back if there's any questions later. And then the current proposed zoning, which again creates the UCE, the RMU, and the UCMU. So the UCE is really along Fifth and Forbes and a little bit along Boulevard of the Allies. The UCMU is also along Boulevard of the Allies. And then the RMU is more into the central heart of the residential district there. All right. And the existing height limits, so this has the, with the existing zoning, this is the proposed maximum heights, including the special exception along Fifth and Forbes to go up to 120 feet and 85 feet along Boulevard of the Allies. And then this is the height proposal. And again, as I mentioned before, these maximum heights aren't necessarily tied to the base zoning district. As you can see, they split in some areas. And the numbers that you see on the screen, so the numbers that aren't parentheses are the ones that are the base height. And then in parentheses adjacent to that would be the maximum height that could be achieved using the performance point system. And then the white line that you see on the zoning map is the height reduction zone, and I'll talk a little bit about that in some coming up slides. All right. So the bonus points that are available, zero energy or zero carbon buildings, all of the new base zoning districts can use those. Same as onsite energy generation. Affordable housing is allowed. Although we've modified how the points work there. On-site public art can be used. Workforce development, this one is new as part of this draft to Chapter 915 for the performance points. And I'll walk through exactly what that entails in the later slides. The rainwater can be used for all the districts. Building reuse portion of that can be used in the residential only. And then fresh food access, which is new-ish also to Chapter 915, that is available in the UCMU only. So in these three new base zoning districts, there are two performance points, or there's two prerequisites that need to be met before the performance points can be used. The first is that projects need to meet the minority of women in business enterprise compliance intent. That is the city policy. And it has to be satisfactory efforts, which is the standard term related to MWE. And then second, that all projects here using the performance points have to be the lowest point for energy consumption. But this also gives them points. So that gives them that additional height in addition to having to do it as a prerequisite. So it is a requirement, but then it also is an incentive as well. So the energy point has been updated through this process, and I won't go into the details here, but generally, the, we needed to update these because the energy codes have increased statewide. And so what we had as a, has the performance points was basically based on building code requirements. So again, the idea behind these performance points is that they're going above and beyond in order to get that additional height. So we needed to sort of bump that up a little bit. And then it's really the other, the other goals that we're trying to achieve here is also just getting away from fossil fuels. And we created, are proposing to create the equitable development performance points here. So there's three ways that you can get one performance point here. The only way you can get just the one performance point is a signed lease agreement between a project and a local workforce group that will provide local workforce training or other sort of non-franchise business. You could get one bonus point for that. And then the other two points actually scale up here. So the first one is the, if you hire 10% of the jobs in the building from underrepresented groups for 10 years, you can get one point. Or you could pay into the city's equitable development trust fund. And those people, and then those scale up. So the percentage for jobs in the building or dollars per rentable commercial square foot scale up to either give you two bonus points or three bonus points. All right. We have also sort of rethought about the way that we have done residential compatibility here. And this is coming out of thinking about how to make sure that it's sort of more context-sensitive as opposed to just, you know, adjacent to a residential zoning district. So actually taking a look at the structures and the adjacent uses. So the one part of this is, a green buffer is required when a new primary structure has a maximum height of more than twice the height of an existing adjacent primary structure, either in the RMU or the UCMU districts. And this, the green buffers would have to be a minimum of 15 feet. And they could either be used as an area for ecological benefit or they could be used for pedestrian access and use. And there are provisions that allow, if you had an existing structure within a green buffer, you would be able to allow it to expand that as a special exception. So that would have to go to the zoning board for a hearing, but it would be permitted by branch. We also, as we've sort of rethought about how to do residential compatibility, we actually have a mapped height reduction zone. And again, the idea is that we're actually taking a look at what's adjacent to these areas and identifying where is less density adjacent or abutting these new districts. So it's actually mapped on our zoning map. The height reduction zone is 20 feet in depth. In that first 20 feet, new structures can't be more than 20 feet taller than the permitted height in the adjacent zoning district. And then this is something that we did as part of the Planning Commission presentation was to look at sort of what some of these maximum heights in build-out sections would be. You know, I won't, we can just, I can sort of slow, excuse me, sorry, slowly go through this just so folks can take a look. I'm not going to sort of, you know, narrate each one. But then if we also have any questions at the end, we certainly can come back. And I will also say that these illustrate maximum height with the bonuses with no urban open space required. So urban open space would be required depending on lot size. But the idea is we're just trying to show, you know, sort of maximum possible build-out in all these areas. So this is on Ophelia. And then we've done the, either it could have a zero-foot setback or no setback. So we showed those two. The next one is on, at the rear of Niagara Street. In this one, it would require a green buffer. So that's shown as well, and the height reduction zone. And then the UCE along McKee Place, with McKee at front and then sort of Coltart down at the bottom. All right. And then the RMU along McKee Place, which is the different, so McKee has the, has the two different zoning districts in two different areas. And then the two different setback options on Dawson. All right. Getting into parking, so the proposal is to reduce the current minimum parking requirements to half of what would currently be required under the regular zoning. And the existing parking minimums would now be the maximum. Folks may be familiar that there is already a parking reduction zone in central Oakland along a portion of Fifth and Forbes. That would go away. So the parking reduction would be, basically, it would be as if the, that the existing parking reduction zone didn't exist. So it's not half of that half. It's just half of what the requirement would have been otherwise. There is the option to contribute to a mobility trust fund to reduce the parking further. Surface parking is limited except as accessory to single and two-unit residential when located at the rear of the property. And in the UCMU, it's permitted up to 10 surface parking spaces for multi-residential with 50 or more dwelling units. No new commercial surface parking is prohibited. Curtain cuts must be out of way, not the street if possible. And ground floor parking is prohibited except where it's wrapped by an active use on a street frontage. The proposal also proposes to require structure to enable parking of six or more spaces, either be EV-ready or EV-capable. And there's different percentages for those two. However, we have carved out that affordable housing is accepted from this requirement. All right. So I'm not going to go over the sort of full proposed use table and standards that is, is available on EngagePGH. And that's something that as, as it came through the process, the public process, the planning commission process, those uses have been updated based on feedback from the public and community groups and commissions. So the UCE and the UCMU allow a wide range of commercial uses. The UCMU also allows residential, single unit attached, and multi-unit. But the UCE, the employment districts, allow a multi-unit residential only if the units are affordable housing or if the residential is less than half of the gross square footage of the structure. And the idea here is to try to encourage employment uses in those areas. And the RMU allows a wide range of residential uses, but it also has smaller-scale residential uses intending to serve residents. So there are a number of safety and building standards that go along with the new base zoning district. So urban open space is required on lots of 20,000 square feet or more. And this is based on our current downtown model, but we've proposed some updated standards in line with what we feel are best practices. We also have minimum sidewalk widths for development. The maximum building length is 250 feet, except for the grocery store use. There are architectural design standards, things like round floor transparency, long-length facades are prohibited and others. And then we've added bird-safe blazing as a design guideline for projects to consider. And the area that is most important for this, for the safety of birds, bird crashes, is the first 60 feet of the building and then anywhere adjacent to green roofs. We do have upper story setbacks for taller buildings. These generally start at 65 feet or six stories. And then we do have building frontage requirements. The idea is that, you know, in order to have a successful urban realm, having a building that's actually interacted with the street makes it more walkable and pedestrian-friendly. So 60% of the building facade has to be in that built-to zone. We've also updated the planning commission thresholds here. So right now, in the open public realm, anything greater, exterior renovation greater than $50,000 needs to go to planning commission. So this is really trying to get at setting at what's a reasonable threshold for projects that do require a public hearing at planning commission. So that's new construction or addition of 15,000 gross square feet or more, commercial structure parking of 40 or more spaces, demolition of any primary structure of 15,000 square feet or greater or a total of more than five primary structures under the same ownership. And then new parks and recreation use of 2,400 square feet or greater planning commission is required unless art commission is required, in which case it would have its public hearing at art commission. And then for anything, for project development plans that have to go to planning commission for building demolitions, that has to include a report study or statement of a property's future use that meets a planning commission criteria. For projects that go to planning commission, this, the legislation proposes to require a whole building lifecycle assessment. So this is really, this is taking a look at how much carbon is used, both when the building is in use and also what's called embedded carbon. So that's how much carbon is making the building, building material extraction, transportation, construction, deconstruction. And the idea here, there's not, we're not, there's not any metrics for carbon reductions. The idea is the study only, the estimated cost is about $10,000 to $15,000. And it would be integrated into the design review process and then presented as part of a planning commission. And the idea here is that we're really trying to get projects to think and to start to think early about their carbon footprint and ways to possibly reduce that. And hopefully, there would either be cost-reachable ways or even cost-saving ways that they could reduce the carbon. And so again, by asking projects to sort of think about this early, we're hoping to really nudge in that, in that direction. Signage standards. So the UCE and the UCMU are the same as our zoning districts for the local neighborhood commercial and our urban neighborhood commercial. And then we're going to keep the, RMU would be the same as the open public realm is currently. So we are also, as part of this proposal, proposing to expand the inclusionary zoning overlay. This would, this would be wider than the base zoning districts that we were looking at. This would be to all of Oakland except the EMI, the Educational Medical Institution. And there's a really small part of West Oakland that touches the uptown public realm. So that would be left out as well. And the reason that we're excluding the educational medical institution is the only type of residential we really see there is dorm. And that just currently isn't set up in a way that we can measure that with our existing inclusionary zoning. Because students who live in dorms generally don't have income, so it's not the same. We can't sort of verify it the same way that we do with our inclusionary zoning. All right. So this is, this is the same standards that exist for the inclusionary zoning elsewhere in the city. So I won't go through this, but we can come back to it if there are questions. All right. And then just touching on the planning commission process. So the planning commission made a positive recommendation on this legislation at its meeting on June 14th with three conditions. One, that city planning provide more information to city council about the height on Coltart. And the commission was concerned that the Coltart district is surrounded by tall buildings and that the rezoning pushes into increased density without having to have, being able to have that conversation yet. And you'll see images on the next couple of slides that we put together to address that. And the commission thought that the 400 feet was too long for the maximum building length. I saw that earlier, but that is now the 250-foot length, except for grocery store. And planning commission also felt that 50 was too high of a number for structural parking spaces for them to see. They wanted that to be lower. So that was, goes down to 40 spaces. So taking a look, this is the height on Hockit from Louisa to Iroquois. You know, again, taking a look at the... You know, again, taking a look at the, at that first condition that planning commission, planning commission made, again, these are, you know, it's a, it's a maximum build-out, it's not a development proposal. And again, it's, it does include some urban open space, but we're really trying to show again, maximum building, this isn't, this isn't a specific development proposal. And it, but does show the urban open space, it shows the building setbacks, and then this is the maximum height if the projects received all of the bonus points up to that maximum height. And this is just a section of the same thing, so this is the axon versus the section. And this was included as well, these, these diagrams will be sent by council to act it up to the council offices, so they should have received that as well, in addition to this being as part of the presentation today. All right, and I covered these already, sorry. So the building length, it was 400 feet, it's now 200 feet, except for grocery store general. And then the structured parking spaces was 50 spaces before planning commission announced boarding. So other zoning changes, this Council Bill 2021-1906 created the UCMU, or a smaller area than what is currently proposed in this, in this legislation for the UCMU, but it is sort of this, they're, the same area, so basically it would be expand the UCMU. So the Council Bill 2021, it was passed by council earlier this year on June 28th, and then it was signed by the mayor on June 30th. It did create the UCMU and its relevant standards. It did update Chapter 15 relative to performance points. We do have some changes in the current legislation that would amend some of those provisions, but they are substantially similar. And again, these, the changes that are proposed in this, in the legislation at the public hearing today are, were from, you know, public and community and commission input. Again, the UCMU standards are substantially the same, but there are some proposed amendments to that. And we do have a current application for a development site that's in that UCMU. So this is the public hearing as required by the zoning code. This is the, the boring stuff that I usually start out with. As required by the zoning code, we have nailed and posted notice 21 days in advance of this public hearing. There are two small technical amendments that need to be made to the legislation. They just erroneously overlooked the planning commission. We need to add the new base zoning districts to 90201, Establishment of Zoning Districts, and then to the zoning district hierarchy, which is 90202. And I think that's the last of my slides, so I will turn that back over to Deputy Director Dash.
Well, like, you know, like I said, stated at the beginning, this is one stage of multiple stages of looking at...
This is one stage?
This is the big one, but, this is, this is the, the big one, but this is one stage of multiple stages of the zoning proposal. In the future, we will be working with the Oakland community and coming back to city council on, you know, these, these few items that I noted before, which is looking at, you know, opportunities for missing middle housing, including accessory dwelling units, which is something that came before council very, you know, very recently, under leadership of Councilwoman Gross, you know, but, you know, thinking about that in the residential districts and how that applies, looking at those mixed-use zones, Craig and Center being primarily those in North Oakland, and then looking at the employment zone of the Melwood area. So, you know, obviously, in Oakland, there are a lot of competing interests, a lot of, a lot of, you know, goals for, you know, that, that are competing as well, from, you know, residents who want to make sure that the effects of density aren't ones that, you know, are, are, you know, ones that are mitigated near them, and that they want to see additional open space, you know, to businesses and institutions that want to see opportunities for more development and density in, you know, in, you know, the, primarily in the Fifth and Forbes corridor, but, you know, in Oakland more generally, you know, and, you know, really, the intention of these zoning districts, these three base zoning districts, and the application of them is to try to balance, create that balance, and to create that opportunity. You know, we see this zoning proposal is moving forward in equity agenda relative to, you know, things around the equitable workforce, as well as affordability in housing, you know, and, you know, doing that in the context of, you know, increasing density as Oakland plays a role in being an innovation district, being a neighborhood, being a business district, being a home for institutions and others. You know, and I, I think the, you know, as Kate had noted, really the opportunity for more density, we wanted to make sure that if, you know, for that to be provided, that it was done in conjunction with a performance point system, so that there was community benefit that came into place when we talked about the opportunity to increase density in Oakland. So with that, I think that concludes our presentation, and after, you know, obviously, after testimony where, you know, the city planning staff are available for any questions.
Yeah, so I appreciate Kate. Thank you so much, Director, Deputy Director Dash, thank you. I don't think I exaggerate when I say this is an enormous amount of information to, to gather, process, incorporate, and, and understand, more importantly than anything else. I'm going to begin by asking our clerk to schedule a briefing for council members. Lavelle, Strasburger, and myself as representatives of Oakland, so that we can do a deep dive, while being mindful and respectful of sunshine, we can do a deep dive. This is not something to be taken lightly, there is an enormous amount of information here that needs to be understood and processed. And then I'm going to ask to have that expanded to other members of council as well, too, in keeping with sunshine law, but, but the, I'm sorry.
A briefing can have staff. You motioned for briefing, so.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be only members.
Yeah, understood, but we, you know, we ultimately have to take the vote. I want us to, to, to fully understand the repercussions of the decisions and choices that we'll be making. This is, this is not, you know, a simple zoning change by any means. So with that, Madam Clerk, if you would please, just if we could, you know, begin with that to have a better understanding of the responsibility we have and completely understanding and incorporating what's being put before us, that would be a good first step there. And then, of course, for all members as well, too, in keeping with respect for sunshine and, and all applicable laws that we're bound by in order to, to better understand. But I for one am somewhat overwhelmed by the amount of information we've just been presented. So with that, we are here, primarily to hear from you, and so I do want to go into the public comment portion of the, of the meeting. We do have 30 people that have registered, so we have a significant amount of people that wish to register comments. So with that, oh, and I, I need to say for the record, we have been joined by council members Gross and Councilman Wilson as well. And so we will now move on to the, our registered speakers. Each speaker will have, we ask when you come to the podium to please give your name, the neighborhood in which, or the institution, if you will, that you represent while you're here. Each person is given three minutes. Those that are online, how are they notified, Madam Clerk? I should know that, between red, green, and yellow.
Please, the microphone.
Will just shut off. So if you are joining us via Zoom, as your three minutes conclude, the microphone will shut off, so we ask that you do keep your comments succinct. And with that, I'm going to move on to our first registered speaker who wishes to register comment in opposition, and that is Elena Zaitsov. Elena, hi, welcome. Are you with us, Elena?
Yes, good afternoon.
Hi, welcome.
I'm Elena Zaitsov, I live in the Oak Cliff neighborhood. Today, I'm representing the Oak Cliff Community Organization of South Oakland, of which I'm vice president. A letter from O C O has been submitted. O C O feels Bill 592 is fraught with issues. We are asking the council does not pass it until more work is done on it, as problems exist with boundaries, dimensions, uses, and the performance point system. The boundaries need to be adjusted so residential parcels are not blanketly rezoned. Some of these are on Joe Hammer Square, Craft Avenue, Wellsford, Hawkeet, and McKee. Oak Cliff Community Organization is not opposed to some commercial enterprise in Oak Cliff. However, we feel we should have a say in it case by case, since we are the ones most impacted. Entire residential street should not be vulnerable to demolition. This calls for an amendment to remove residential parcels from rezoning. While we appreciate the length being reduced from 400 to 250 feet, it is still too long, as 250 feet is a city block. The heights of 210, 1885, and 120 feet do not belong adjacent to residential areas. Coltart will become a canyon and Oak Cliff will be walled in. Urban center employment zoning, allowing heights of 210 feet, does not belong right across from Oak Cliff. That height is not in keeping with other nearby buildings. O P R districts designed to protect the character of less intensive uses from impacts of more intensive uses are being eliminated. Gone are residential compatibility standards, setbacks, and other protections for our neighborhoods. Our tax dollars are getting us less protection from other neighborhoods, the character of our neighborhoods will be destroyed. The use table was developed by city planners without public engagement. The performance point system, never discussed at meetings, was developed by city planners after all the meetings were over. Buildings can reach maximum height through points which don't benefit the community. One-time fines for failure to comply, if there even was enforcement, amount to the cost of doing business to get more height. One requirement is actually being incentivized. Both the use table and the point system need to be reworked with community input and a reasoned approach. We applaud the inclusionary zoning piece of this. As occurred in other neighborhoods, it should be in some legislation. Placing it here was a ploy to get all the other zoning approved. Please, do not pass this just to get I Z. It can be standalone legislation. Perhaps new zoning type should, each new zoning type should have its own bill. There is criteria city council has to consider for zoning changes. How that criteria are not met is outlined in our letter. As city council here to represent the interests of constituents, this zoning bill has not been written for residents. Now it's up to you to do the right thing for us. The Oak Cliff Community Organization requests that city council tables a vote until it can be amended. Thank you.
Thanks, Elena, appreciate your comment. Our next registered speaker is Michael, Michael, forgive me, Kaiman. Online or in person? Michael Kaiman. Nope, okay, we'll hold off. If he does join us, we'll bring him back. James Young. Online or in person?
Up there.
Yep.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, welcome. You wish to register comment.
My name is James Young, and I live at 214 Tennesham in Oakland. While I am a member of the Shenley Farms Civic Association Board, I am speaking to you today as a private resident and concerned citizen. One of my biggest alarms about our city of Pittsburgh, including Oakland, is the apathy, the disregard, and the outright disrespect shown toward our handsome pre-World War II architecture. It was in this world pre-war period that buildings were built with style. They were built with heavy and costly materials, and they were built with a level of human handcraft that is man-hours, that one does not see in the new Pittsburgh architecture. These beautiful distorted buildings, built by the unnamed hands of some of our grandparents and great-grandparents, are torn down willy-nilly to be replaced with cheap, prefabricated, and ugly modern structures. And city leaders like the mayor, like the Historic Review Commission, and the city council will often roll over when money interests start talking about progress as they see it. I'd like to ask three things. Number one, protect Pittsburgh's pre-war buildings. Pittsburghers deserve to live with a physical built culture which conveys time, legacy, history, and beauty. Two, require adaptive reuse of pre-war buildings without destroying the original aesthetics of the exterior. Preserving existing structures is very green policy. Number three, modify the proposed inclusionary zoning legislation under discussion today with amendments which exempts historic buildings, districts, and other pre-war buildings which deserve protection. I'm not against affordable housing, but would like to see it made compatible with historic reservations. For centuries, people have been coming to Pittsburgh to squeeze personal financial profit out of the city, often with callous disregard for the environment, the people, or the cultural history of what was built before. We must protect Pittsburgh and allow her worthy built cultural history to survive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Young, appreciate you being here. Millie Sasse, you're our next registered speaker, and you wish to register comment in opposition, so welcome, Millie.
I'm Judith, thank you. My name is Millie Sasse, I'm a longtime resident of the Oakland community. The ordinance in front of you is faulty in many ways, with significant problems in both process and product. I urge you to return it back to city planning for a complete redo. More residents need to be involved. Their questions, concerns, and contribution must be truly considered and made part of the Oakland plan. With the current version, the input, needs, and requests of businesses, universities, hospitals, and outside consultants were disproportionately included in the final product, many times ignoring questions and comments by residents. Online maps, misleading still are, and difficult to read. When we ask for clarity, we are often given wrong information about the plan and the zoning based on those maps. If Oakland is such a leader in education, technology, and employment opportunity in the state and nation, then Oakland deserves a more comprehensive and inclusive look at what it could become in the next decades, rather than picking pieces of an ordinance from another city area, one that maybe survives some test legality, and so therefore we don't want any more challenges, do we? Oakland, with all of its uniqueness and opportunities, deserves to begin at the beginning to create a wonderful plan that benefits our businesses as well as our long- and short-term residents. We must not be written out of the vision state, no, we must contribute to the vision. I realize maybe this is not what you're voting on in, in the legislation in front of you, but I need to say. Development can be good, but not when it is at the expense of stable residential communities and involved residents. We need residential compatibility, not minor stepbacks. We need lower buildings, not items soaring to 185 or 210 feet, or even, even more for grocery stores. We do not need buildings rezoned from a residential category to UCMU, which will open floodways for huge buildings with, with associated parking and problems. The point system might work for some city areas, but it will result in items that do not meet the needs of Oakland residents. I could go on and on, but you've heard it all before. This is a harmful ordinance, it needs to be quashed. Reject it and have city planning start again, using the lessons that we've learned in the current fiasco. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Thanks, Millie, appreciate you being here. Our next registered speaker is Norman Cleary. Norman wishes to register support, I believe, no, comment. Hi, oh, thank you so much. Yep. Okay, Norman, thank you.
I'm Norm Cleary, and I serve as chairman of the Shenley Farms Civic Association Institutional and Government Relations Committee, and I reside on Parkman Avenue in North Oakland. History and experience have demonstrated compelling reasons for concern over anticipated unintended consequences of including historic structures and districts within the I Z O. There are limited applications for the proposed amendments on the underlying R1 D V L historic district, but there's more to consider. The Shenley Farms Historic District is a neighborhood of remarkable examples of turn-of-the-century historic architecture, with families of ethnic and racial diversity. In addition, we're home to the Islamic center of Pittsburgh, and the little-known fact that in 2013, Bellifield Dwellings was annexed into the Shenley Farms Historic District. Shenley Farms residents, through the considerable efforts of S F C A, petitioned the State Historic Preservation Office to expand the historic district to include Bellifield Dwellings. Eligibility for historic preservation tax credits to fund necessary building preservation for affordable senior housing in North Oakland was the overriding objective. As a result, the property owner was able to fund maintenance, improve building energy efficiency, and add amenities permitting our area seniors to age-in-place. Now why is this relevant? Just across the street sits Shenley High School, constructed within the historic district, and but for timing, would have fallen within the I Z O affordability mandate. An already complex process of approvals for adaptive reuse as multifamily residential units would have become further complicated had the I Z O been in effect at the time. For years, the historic high school building sat vacant and was considered by most qualified developers as a white elephant. Finding a developer with a vision and financial resources to properly preserve the property and assure compatibility within the residential neighborhood was very challenging. The community acquired knowledge as this project played out with a developer. Just one more financial hurdle may have scuttled the entire project, and had that occurred, preservation of the historic building would have been in grave jeopardy. Our neighborhood experience has demonstrated that a mix of affordability, compatibility, and preservation should be the policy objective, rather than imposition of a blanket overlay including all... of Historic Places and/or historic districts as defined in Title 11 of the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Thank you. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if time permits.
We don't interact, engage. I said that both at the same time.
Okay.
At a public hearing. But Norman, thank you for your comments. Well received. Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next registered speaker who wishes to speak in favor is Andrea Boikowitz. Andrea, are you online?
Yes, I'm here. My name is Andrea Boikowitz, and I live on Parkview Avenue in Central Oakland. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I don't have terribly well prepared remarks here, and I've been listening to my neighbors as well as to the presentation that Kate Riegus went through at the table. I had a couple of small observations. One is the land use map that Deputy Director Dash presented earlier for Oakland's omitted Halkett from the proposed UCMU zone, which is illustrative of the point that we've been making all along, that zoning as Halkett as the UCMU was not an outcome of the total planning process, and it isn't necessarily present with the recommendations that came out of that process. I wanted to note also that the profile renderings that Kate Riegus presented for the height on the Key Place and Halkett Street versus Coltard and Halkett Place were alarming, but they were also understated because they didn't take into account the actual topography of the ground, so they had an additional 15 feet on either side to the difference that those proposed heights actually create for the people at ground level on Coltard. I wanted to commend Councilwoman Kraus for acknowledging the complexity and the far-reaching impact that the zoning changes will all have for Oakland, and I only wish that council had taken the same trouble when considering Council Level 2021-1906. And I'm not going to beat the dead horse, but I would like to point out that there are a great many implications for almost every single one of these zoning aspects that should be taken carefully under consideration and are very difficult to understand, especially if delivered in this kind of rapid-fire manner. I wanted to point out that the number of those renderings that city planning just presented to you, that's the first time in the public is seeing them as well. And if it was difficult for you to grasp them in that kind of speed, and if you needed additional time and information in order to be able to make a reasoned decision, then I beg you to consider that the residents of Oakland might need the same consideration. I was receiving a postcard, like many other property owners in Oakland, indicating that the subject of this afternoon's hearing was inclusionary zoning, and it did not detail that the bill, you know, that is before you, where the package that is before you included all of the zoning proposals, and I feel that that is maybe a little bit misleading. I know that there are a number of people who expressed interest in commenting today who were specifically interested only in the inclusionary zoning case. For the record, I would like to be able to say that I vehemently, emphatically, and energetically support the extension of the inclusionary zoning to all parts of Oakland outside of the EMI district, and feel that the proposed zoning...
Andrea, I'm sorry, your time expired, but I appreciate you being here and offering comment today. Our next registered speaker wishing to register comment is Wanda Wilson. Wanda, are you with us online, I think? Alex, do we have Wanda online?
I'm sorry, can you hear me, Councilwoman?
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you, Wanda.
Okay, thank you. My name is Wanda Wilson with Oakland Planning and Development Corporation, a nonprofit community development organization serving the community with affordable housing development, community services, with a focus on racial and economic equity for our residents. OPDC is a developer, owner, and manager of affordable housing, both for rent and for sale. We have very long wait lists for our units in our affordable apartment buildings. The affordable housing prices in our city and in Oakland is real. We support approval of the inclusionary zoning overlay to all of Oakland, and we urge you to approve this. OPDC is concerned about the impact the new urban center residential mixed-use district will have on small-scale residential areas surrounding it on several instances, Coltard and Niagara as examples. Members of the planning commission shared these concerns regarding height and density and open space. They expressed and we shared concern about the regulations allowing large building mats with tiny open spaces that will not add high-quality spaces nor mitigate massive buildings on neighbors. Overly large building frontage is a problem in terms of urban design. To quote the commission chair, "I can't imagine where a 400-long-foot-long building belongs in these districts." The zoning allows building development that will not create great spaces. While this has been changed to 150 feet, we question why it's the exception for grocery store use and oppose that provision. The commission and the public were not provided adequate information and visualization about the zoning proposals. The commission expressed concern about not having a section drawing showing the potential build-out of development on Halkett in relation to the existing homes on Coltard. So commissioners do that city council should consider this impact. You don't have that drawing. The commission did not have adequate information. They spent a great deal of time articulating their concerns. OPDC urges council not to approve the districts adjacent to Coltard based on the materials provided at the hearing today, which shows detrimental impact. Use of performance point system is a compelling zoning device to achieve certain goals. OPDC is concerned that they will not achieve equitable development to support Oakland residents, especially low-income residents here. It's a missed opportunity that the Economic Opportunity Point System is very unlikely to support the needs of underserved residents in our community, so the goal of equity will not be achieved. OPDC supports equitable development to support the needs of Oakland residents, and the performance points will not go far enough to achieve this or guarantee that Oakland residents will benefit. While increased density in central Oakland adjacent to the business district makes sense from a planning point of view, we're concerned about the impact of large-scale demolition. Recommend a demolition overlay review be put in place to coordinate city departments to respond to the many issues that will surely arise. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thanks, Wanda. Appreciate you being here. Our next registered speaker is Robert Squires. Hi, Robert, you're here, and you wish to register comment.
Yes, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Robert H. Squires. I'm currently president of the Shenley Farms Civic Association and reside at 4301 Bigelow Boulevard. I have visited with many of my neighbors in Shenley Farms, and each one has expressed strong concern regarding the IZO overlay of our historic district. In previous testimony, you heard a little about the adaptive reuse of Shenley High School, which is a historic building within the historic Shenley Farms district. Adaptive reuse of this historic building as a multifamily residential required multifaceted analysis of historic preservation, interior modification of the floor plans, and project economics. To meet a minimum economic viability, the developer proposed a roof addition, which both the community and the Historic Review Commission opposed, as it was contextually and aesthetically inappropriate. The resulting plan was to further subdivide floor plates into smaller units to meet the required operational revenue targets. This was an unfortunate compromise but necessary for the project to proceed. Additional economic pressure of the IZO, had it been in effect, may have jeopardized the project viability of this historic building in a historic district. Our historic district community strongly supports the proposal presented by Norm Cleary, and I stand to emphasize or request that the councilperson, Erica Strasburger, introduce the following IZO exception language into Section 902.03 zoning map to read, excluding any area zoned EMI or URP or historic districts or structures listed in the National Register of Historic Places and/or the historic districts as defined in Title 11 of the City of Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Thank you very much for your attention and your consideration of this request.
Thanks, Robert. Appreciate you being here. Excuse me, our next registered speaker today is Mark Oleniak. Mark wishes to register comment in opposition, and I'm assuming Mark's online. Hi, Mark.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, Mark, we can hear you. The floor is yours.
Sorry, I've had problems in the past. Okay, I'm Mark Oleniak. I live on Julius Street in South Oakland. I want to say again for the record that I'm not opposed to some changes in zoning or new development, but I am opposed to vastly overreaching changes in massive development that would be permanently detrimental to this community, one step closer to eliminating a more residential area and any true sense of community. This former Marathon Gas Station is being redeveloped now without a single variance over this legislation. I again challenge Council President Galesmith to reveal where the abundance of quote-unquote slums are to justify these catastrophic changes. I do support expanding the inclusionary zoning, IZ, in Oakland, but again, the fact that maximum heights can be achieved without any affordable housing points requires at least that change and a more thorough overall review of the point system and addressing the affordability criteria, as well as the fines for failure to comply with any of the bonus point requirements should be for the life of the building. I think that city planning's outreach for residents that this hearing only mentioned IZ is disingenuous advice, if not obfuscating its true nature, to encourage more support for this legislation. As this legislation be rejected or held for more revisions and IZ be separated, it presented like it was in every other expansion, and the city planning finally provided some level of 3D perspective renderings to show potential building impacts on Coltard Avenue, but sadly they are inaccurate, if not a lie. You can see in annotated images that I sent separately, that they don't adequately label a 30-foot differential between Coltard Avenue and the Key Place, and neither diagram seems to even represent the 20-to-30-foot differential to Hawkins Street. This is inexcusable. We have come to respect this type of smoke and mirrors from developers, but not quite city planning. The basis for the first point for zero energy, zero carbon is part of current normal building code, so it should be removed, and any requirements for accumulating base points should be adapted to include affordable housing instead. The high-production zone is not a proper replacement for residential compatibility standards. By removing those protections, plus some of the other increases and changes, the literal walls along and adjacent to the boulevard and the alleys will obliterate the view of cathedral learning that thousands of South Oakland residents have enjoyed and cherished as a sense of place and connection for nearly 100 years. Please do not allow this pale and inadequate substitute and unnecessary changes or aggressively destroy that. I urge city council to reject or alter or further modify this legislation, change, separate out IZ, restore or create a better substitute for residential compatibility standards, reduce the maximum heights given by points, and expand the process to get points to allow for some community input on the impacts of those heights and mass and similar ZDA areas. Thank you.
Mark, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Our next registered speaker is Karen Breen. I can't speak today. Hi, Karen, it's nice to see you. Welcome, and you wish to offer comment.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Karen Breen. I live at 300 Leroy Road in Point Breeze, and my office is at 6401 Penn Avenue in East Liberty. I'm here today in my role as planning consultant to Walnut Capital. As some of you know, I'm an alum of the Department of City Planning, and I was also a consultant to planning for the rewrite of those zoning ordinance to the Urban Zoning Code project. The urban center mixed-use district legislation was signed by Mayor Geney less than three months ago, on June 30th, after extensive and thoughtful input by council. The proposed Oakland zoning legislation that's before you today includes amendments to the recently enacted UCMU district as part of the overall packet of amendments. When the Walnut Capital team first saw that all of three zoning districts would be packaged together for introduction to city council, we assumed that the UCMU legislation would remain unchanged, with the exception of any technical cleanup, but apparently that's not the case. We performed a thorough review of the enacted and proposed ordinances and found a number of changes. Some of them are clearly cleanup. However, there are other changes that have significant impact and need to be reviewed prior to council action, and I'd like to highlight just a few examples of them. First, building length, which you've heard about already today. In the enacted legislation, the maximum building length is 400 feet. In the proposed amendments, the maximum length is 250 feet. I'd like to submit an exhibit that illustrates existing buildings across the city, including in Oakland, that would not have been allowed under this requirement. For example, the Allegheny County Courthouse is 300 feet along Forbes Avenue. Heinz Hall is 325 feet along Penn. And as for Oakland, Carnegie Library and Museum is 450 feet long at Shenley Plaza, and the new CMU Forbes Avenue dorm is 460 feet long. So I'll give this to the city clerk in a minute. Thank you. Second, I want to talk about affordable housing for a minute. In the enacted legislation, affordable housing is incentivized through the height bonus point system. In the proposed amendments, the bonus point systems remain. However, the amendments include the requirement for compliance with the inclusionary zoning standards that appear elsewhere in the code. Therefore, it's both a requirement and a bonus. It should be an either-or situation, such that the inclusionary zoning applies in all cases except where the developer complies with the affordable housing performance points requirement. Third, an example of use regulations, educational classroom space. In the proposed amendments, a use standard has been added that doesn't allow educational classroom space as a primary use in a building that's 20,000 square feet or greater. So as a result, classroom buildings have been essentially removed from the UCMU district.
Sorry, but you are welcome to submit the remainder of the comments, and they will be distributed to all members.
Thank you. That was actually just about at the end.
Okay.
So I would like to just submit the exhibit that I talked about, a list of all the changes between the enacted UCMU and a matrix that I did that pulls it out.
Perfect. Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. Pushing the envelope there. Thank you. Let's see, Randy Sargent is our next registered speaker, and Randy wishes to register comment in favor, as I have it recorded here. So Randy, welcome. Your next, our next registered speaker.
Hi.
Hi, Randy.
My name is Randy Sargent. I live on Fraser Street in South Oakland, and I'm also secretary of the South Oakland Neighborhood Group. Together with my neighbors, I help run an after-school technology and arts program in South Oakland, serving our local youth. Over recent decades, as rents have gone up faster than when it comes to our residents, we in Oakland have lost 40% of our fellow Black residents. That's 1,600 of our neighbors, while population of other races in Oakland has in aggregate increased. In the past years, as I've been helping run our after-school program now, I've seen many families of our program's kids lose their housing, all families of color. After being vented, unblacked families try to find alternative housing, they're currently feeling unable to find anything affordable without a long waiting list. I've seen our neighborhoods addicted kids and parents separated from each other when they've been homeless. I've seen our neighborhoods' parents and kids lose possessions on the curb having no place to bring them up. Additionally, I've talked to young adults who grew up in South Oakland, and now as an adult leaving their childhood house, want to stay in South Oakland that cannot afford to, forcing our next-generation families to leave elsewhere. We in Pittsburgh must do more to control rising rents, to invest in low-cost housing, and invest in pathways of ownership for those who are otherwise put at risk by perpetually rising rents. I strongly favor the proposed expansion to Oakland and Pittsburgh's inclusionary zoning overlay, and Bleda will be an effective tool to harness future development and wealth generation to stabilize and make possible housing for those of us in Oakland who are most at risk of displacement from these same activities. Like every other, I was saying only that we'd be focusing on inclusionary zoning today. I acknowledge the problems that's faced by my fellow residents in Oakland related to the other zoning proposals, and regret not preparing myself to make comment on those other zoning proposals. Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Appreciate you being here. Let's see, our next registered speaker is Richard Kaplan, who wishes to register comment in favor. Richard, you here? Nope, thank you. If he comes on, we will come back to him. David Brennigan, I hope I said that correctly? Not online? No, thank you. Alex, appreciate it. How about Eric McAdangdang? Yes? Okay. Eric, you are our next registered speaker wishing to offer comment in favor. The floor is yours, Eric.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eric McAdangdang. I'm a graduate student at the University of Pittsburgh's Graduate School of Public and International Affairs.
How about Eric McAdangdang? Yes? Okay. Eric, you are our next registered speaker wishing to offer comment in favor. The floor is yours, Eric.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eric McAdangdang. I'm a graduate student at the University of Pittsburgh's Graduate School of Public and International Affairs. I'm here to speak specifically in favor of the new inclusionary zoning overlay in Oakland, but remain frustrated to say the least by the lack of clarity to residents and the community at large as to what's actually being covered for council consideration. I join in with Randy in being empathetic to the concerns that have been brought up thus far by residents. But as it specifically pertains to inclusionary zoning, I think it's the bare minimum we can do in the face of the rampant financialization that prices out poor residents in our neighborhoods. For Oakland, this was a clear desire to have inclusionary zoning, as displayed by it being included in the Oakland Plan, which engaged residents, businesses, institutions, and other stakeholders. Earlier this year, the former UN Special Rapporteur on Human Rights to Adequate Housing Leyla Nafarha visited the city, where she met with community organizers and city officials to learn about the current state of housing in Pittsburgh. She concluded that she is fearful for the future of Pittsburgh if it continues down a path of using the housing market as an investment strategy rather than a basic right. She emphasized the need of a human rights framework to address this, which I think is brilliant, since the city proclaimed itself as a human rights city over a decade ago. Being a human rights city is not just the buzzword, it's a legal obligation to uphold international law as it pertains to human rights, which includes basic adequate housing. Oakland residents, as it is both current and in the future, face a precarity brought on by the influence of large anchor institutions and the high volume of activity they bring. Thus, we need to base a housing strategy on the incomes and experiences of existing residents. We need a housing strategy that advocates for residents not merely preserving capital, and we need a housing strategy that expands affordable housing in our neighborhoods. We need a strategy that regulates private actors in defense of public needs. If the city cannot house its most vulnerable, then what are we? I implore council to support the inclusionary overlay district. Thank you.
Hey, Eric, thank you, appreciate it. Our next registered speaker is Jody Lincoln. No, do we? Nope, we do not. How about Christina Howell? Yes, Christina, you are our next registered speaker, and you wish to offer comment in favor of the legislation. Floor is yours, Christina. You're on mute, Christina.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, I can, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Christina Howell. I am Executive Director of Bloomfield Development Corporation. Our address is 4900 Friendship Avenue in Bloomfield. I'm here today because I want to pull out very narrowly the piece about inclusionary zoning. I think I'm no stranger to this council that Bloomfield recently was given, sorry, inclusionary zoning legislation, and that went into effect earlier this year, and neighbors have been very excited about it. We know it's only one tool, everyone's very pragmatic, however, it is an important tool for us, and we believe for other neighborhoods around us, which is why we partnered with Polish Hill to work on that advocacy. And we know that Oakland needs more affordable housing, and I think that's an undisputed fact. And inclusionary zoning is a very great, important tool that can help create those affordable units and affordable houses, particularly in the neighborhood, collection of neighborhoods where there is large-scale development, not only possible, but probable and planned. So I am here simply to advocate for inclusionary zoning in order to help keep folks in their neighborhood, but also allow people who work in Oakland to live in Oakland, because it is increasingly not possible for folks who work in the service industries and support our large institutions to live nearby their jobs. So that's all I want to say, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you all for being here.
Great. Thank you, Christina. The next registered speaker is Georgia Petropolis, who I see is with us in person, wishing to register comment on the proposed zoning changes. Georgia, welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm Georgia Petropolis, and I'm representing the Oakland Business Improvement District. Good afternoon, council.
Yep.
And good afternoon, Council McGrath. I will begin this testimony as I have for years. Pittsburgh has two downtowns. Both are regional-serving job centers, both are also local-serving neighborhood centers. You have a golden triangle, and you have a golden rectangle, if you will. Our uniqueness in Oakland is that our economic job-creating generators are the eds and meds, with an incredible strength in research. Every city in America that is home to these industries are all vying to recruit the talent, investment, jobs, the new residents and families that these generators attract. So from the start, we all understood and agreed that Oakland required a unique approach to developing a long-term plan to properly reflect this local, regional, and global serving center. We must continue to use this lens as we review what you have in front of you today, for your decisions will impact not only the thousands today and into the future, but within five years, you'll be impacting millions. I was involved in the process from the start, and I was excited to see that Director Dash's team somehow managed to get our 50-plus diverse stakeholder voices come to a unanimous agreement on two very crucial goals: take care of the people and take care of the environment. In regards to the people, we agreed on two very important goals. If you currently live, study, work, or own a business in Oakland, we want you to continue to be here, we want you to continue to flourish. We also agreed that Oakland needed to open its doors to the people who still cannot get in and benefit from Oakland's might. We supported increasing access, affordability, equity, and inclusion. We support the Oakland Plan that so eloquently and boldly spoke to these goals. We're also close to a vision statement that will inevitably guide these goals. What we today, though, unfortunately oppose, is the zoning legislation put forth at this time. We're asking for council to provide more time for further review of the impact that this zoning will have on Oakland as one of Pittsburgh's key economic generators. However, at this time, we are proposing three main changes. Oakland is not just any employment center, we are the center of Pittsburgh's thriving Innovation District. We ask that the UCE District be renamed UC Innovation District. The heights, the base height limit in the UCE District should be raised from 85 to a minimum of 150 feet, and the maximum height in bonus in this zone should be 210 feet uniformly. These changes align with the expertise, with the expert consultants that the Department of City Planning hired for the process that we were in, and also for the reports that DCB provided as well. We ask that you utilize sub-districts to encourage uses in the UCE Zone, such as consider residential uses near BRT to maximize transit-oriented development, and also for important, as a prerequisite for innovation economy jobs on Fifth and Forbes, and incentivize retail uses that promote a vibrant, street-level neighborhood. My partners today will speak more specifically to these three recommendations that you will hear later on. So therefore, on behalf of the Oakland community, on behalf of the Oakland Business Improvement District, we will, we ask you forward to continue this important conversation. We look forward to continue this important conversation.
Almost. Thank you, Georgia, appreciate you being here. Thank you very much. Dominic Victoria will be our next registered speaker. Yes, he is online and wishes to offer comment in favor of the legislation.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Wonderful. All right, yeah, so like you mentioned, my name is Dominic Victoria. I'm a junior undergraduate at the University of Pittsburgh. I've also lived in Pittsburgh my whole life, and now I am in a pit-owned apartment-style residence, but I'm in Central Oakland, so I am here today as a community member. I am simply in support of one portion of the proposal, like I've been performing, and that's the proposal to extend inclusionary zoning, to include sort of a large portion of our neighborhood. Like I mentioned, like a lot of people have mentioned, there's clearly a lot going on in this package, and I do certainly hope that the concerns of residents who spoke on those other portions are considered. But my big request, really short, where were your deliberations to take you? Please include inclusionary zoning to the extent it's included now in the proposal. I've had the pleasure of living in Oakland for the last couple of years, and I've interacted with and bust through and spent time in Oakland community for years now, my entire life, and I think it's crucial that more housing is provided here. And I think that housing needs to legitimately meet the needs of everyone regardless of their income level. It's especially important now, in light of some of those bigger development projects that we're seeing, in the very near future, it seems that the lower-income residents are not forgotten. And from what I know and what I've seen, IZ sort of codifies this, so it won't be a problem to the extent that it might have been without. And also, I think that looking at a citywide level, the program's been successful in other neighborhoods, so I just hope that Oakland becomes another step towards eventually extending the program citywide. You know, I do have every intention of staying here forever, and I think with each expansion of IZ, we, as Pittsburghers, and you know, obviously, as our council's choking into ensuring that everyone who wants to do the same, everyone who wants to live in Oakland or live in Pittsburgh forever, is actually able to afford it. That, I thank you, and yeah.
Thanks, Dominic, appreciate it. Next registered speaker I have is Derek Dressler, who wishes to speak, offer comment on the legislation. Nope, I'm sorry, we don't have Derek. How about Mike Madden? Yes, Mike Madden is on. Mike, you are our next registered speaker, and you wish to offer comment on the legislation.
Thank you, Councilman. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mike, thank you.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to acknowledge and appreciate the efforts by all parties over the last three years. This Oakland Plan and zoning is something that many people and organizations have spent quite a bit of time and effort on. With that being said, I am fearful that the proposed zoning as it stands today will not deliver on the goals and priorities laid forth in the plan we've collectively created. On behalf of the Pittsburgh Innovation District, there are three distinct aspects of the proposed zoning code that will under-deliver on the great potential of our world-class Innovation District and neighborhood. The first aspect of the proposed zoning that needs to be changed is the naming of the current UCE Zone. From experience, I can tell you that Innovation Districts all across the world look at Oakland with envy. With a collection of world-class institutions that rival nearly any other market, Brooklyn's deemed Oakland the most naturally occurring Innovation District in the world. Our universities and health system are the single most important assets for our region's economic future. For these reasons, we need to plant a flag of support and commitment and designate the currently named UCE Zone as the UC Innovation District within the zoning code. By doing so, we are perpetuating our belief that Oakland and our Innovation District is not a place that can be replicated anywhere else in the city or southwestern Pennsylvania. Second, in order to maintain our competitive advantage against our peer cities, we need to have a realistic building height within the Innovation District zoning along Fifth and Forbes Avenue. The current proposed bonus point system puts us at a major disadvantage by relying on a series of bonus points to achieve the height required for a 21st-century innovation economy. It is a dangerous risk to think that developers can deliver innovation assets like web lab and competitive office space by utilizing this difficult bonus point system. We call for the base height limit in the UCE District to be raised from 85 feet to 150 feet. The maximum height limit with bonus in the zone should be 200 feet uniformly throughout the UCE Zone, and the length of the building should be extended from 250 feet to 400 feet. To see what these building dimensions can deliver, look no further than our friends in Philadelphia, Baltimore, and Cleveland. Oakland in our region will sorely lack the space and amenities for mature 21st-century innovation economy along Fifth and Forbes Avenue. Finally, we believe that sub-districts should be utilized to strategically encourage specific industry uses in the UCE Zone. By concentrating these innovation investments in central Oakland, we are creating intentional controlled pockets of development so Oakland can remain a neighborhood that is a strong residential area within a walking distance of a world-class innovation and business district. Thank you for your time and consideration. We have a plan calling for Oakland and the Pittsburgh Innovation District to be a world-class showcase of innovation, business, and residential living. Let's make that reality with improved zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Charles Alcorn, do we have Charles online?
Fraser.
Oh, hey, Charles, welcome. Yes, you wish to register, excuse me, register comment in opposition to the legislation. Welcome.
My name is Chuck Alcorn. I'm here to speak on behalf of the University of Pittsburgh in my role as planner. The city, along with many Oakland residents, business owners, community organizations, and institutions, including the university, engaged in significant public review of the Oakland Plan. However, parts of the actual zoning legislation should be further refined with additional input from key stakeholders and property owners. The new zoning legislation will have a significant impact on all of Oakland by creating new zoning districts, adopting substantial changes from current zoning, and binding property owners in the future development of property. The significance and wide-reaching effects of these changes merit further evaluation and refinement. In addition, the university is concerned about the lack of legally required written notices to property owners for this hearing. The university did not receive a legally required mailed notice despite owning several impacted properties. As a result, legislation is vulnerable to a court challenge for failure to follow the proper procedures. The university respectfully requests that council send this rezoning ordinance back to the planning commission for further review and refinement. This is not a request that the university makes lightly. However, as currently drafted, the ordinance could significantly impede university development objectives. We and other stakeholders have additional valuable input to contribute on how the ordinance can better align with university and community plans for the greater good of Oakland. City Planning has done a remarkable job, a commendable job, in advancing an important master plan and rezoning effort, and we know their task has not been easy. In this instance, the neighborhood plan and community plans proceeded simultaneously with an enactment of a zoning legislation. As a result, some of the finer points of zoning legislation may have been obscured by the larger scope of the planning efforts. The legislation does not capture certain key points raised during two years of community feedback that the university received during its council-approved institutional master plan process, which indicated denser educational activity along Fifth and Forbes corridor, and a need for student housing closer to a campus within central Oakland. Any new zoning ordinance would determine the future of a region's planned Innovation District and the surrounding Oakland neighborhoods. So the aspiration should be to enact that Oakland Plan's goals. The zoning legislation should not be approved hastily without further discussion and input. Taking this back to the planning commission will provide an opportunity to refine this binding legislation that will have lasting impacts for Oakland. Thank you for your time.
Forgive me, Charles, thank you, appreciate you being here. Thank you for your comment. John Rhodes will be our next registered speaker. John is online, he wishes to register comment in favor of the legislation, and John, the floor is yours.
Hi, my name is John Rhodes, and I live at 330 Leagins Street in Polashell. I serve as the Chair of the Housing and Development Committee for the Polashell Civic Association. I'm speaking today at the invitation of OPDC, and my comments are in favor of expanding inclusionary zoning to the designated areas of Oakland identified in the proposed plan. Polashell is a community that has worked hard with our adjacent B-Work group partners to support bringing inclusionary zoning into existence in Lawrenceville, and then to expand it to Polashell and Bloomfield. We all thank our City Council member, Deb Gross, for her leadership, as well as Mayor Genie for his, and we thank City Council as a whole for voting to bring IZ out to our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are like Oakland in that we all have a long history of being places where families of any income level could find a home. Inclusionary zoning is an important tool to achieve that balance, just as Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, and Polashell have been included in the city's IZ. It seems only appropriate that this designation would be expanded to Oakland, which has been asking for it for some time. Thank you for your consideration.
Hey, John, thank you so much. Henry Schwartz is our next registered speaker. He is, we do, Mr. Schwartz is online, wishes to register comment in opposition. Mr. Schwartz, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. My name is Henry Schwartz, and I'm a co-managing partner of the Ocean Real Estate Company. Our company has holdings in retail, restaurant storefronts, and office space, we have technology... renovation technology companies, and other commercial properties in Oakland. I'd like to speak today from the perspective of property owners and tenants on Forbes Avenue. First, we support the goals of the Pittsburgh Innovation District incorporation into the Oakland plan, this UCE to become the innovation district. And we encourage City Council to support a more robust and competitive zoning designation for the Forbes Fifth Corridor. This will help create, excuse me, a critical mass of innovation space, while we look at its wet labs and research and development space to allow Oakland to compete nationally and even globally in the post-COVID competition for the next generation of innovation economy tenants. Oakland is not competing against the slimmer area of the Strip, but Austin and Boston and Barcelona because it's a worldwide competition to bring the next level of innovation. Unfortunately, the current zoning recommendations and planning do not get us that critical mass that was spoken before by Georgia and Mike to allow us to compete in a national and global marketplace. Another point I can make is the innovation district is not really a new concept. It's been around for more than a decade and can trace its roots to the Red Oakland, a co-working innovation hub we created in 2012. Innovation Pittsburgh currently runs this initiative for us, and I could not be prouder of all the value it offers. It's important to note that the innovation district zoning density issue is not intended as a zero-sum game, where the success of the business community comes at the expense of the residents and neighbors. The new zoning code needs to encourage the workforce to live, work, and play in Oakland. Our company is old enough to remember that a generation ago, the underoccupied residential community in Oakland was the backbone of the tenant's retail customer base. Forbes Avenue was lined with small businesses, bakeries, grocery shops, sit-down restaurants, and jazz clubs. We're excited by the prospect that increasingly the workforce in Oakland will like to live here as well as bring young families and undertake the renovation of some of the great housing stock, which has currently been converted from single-family use to student housing. That's what's most essential to my tenants for their success, a robust residential community and influx of non-student housing. And secondly, a strong employment base in the district. I would like to thank you for your time, and we can, as previous speakers have mentioned, look to other cities around the country and the world that have had success by creating this 18-hour-day activity of retail and restaurants and business opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Appreciate your comments. Our next registered speaker is Amethy Sandstrom, who wishes to register comment in favor. Amethy is not on. Thank you. How about Carol Hardeman? Carol is not with us. Helen Gerhart is. Hi, Helen. You are our next registered speaker wishing to register comment on the legislation.
Hello, Councilwoman Kraus. I was here to represent Lawrenceville United, but our director, Dave Brennan, was able to rejoin the meeting and will be testifying on the organization's behalf, so I yield my time.
Okay, Helen, thank you so much. Appreciate it. It's nice to have you here. Ron Levick, you are our next registered speaker wishing to offer comment in favor. Is he on? Yes, Ron, hi. Welcome. You have the floor.
There we go. Okay. Hi, my name is Ron Levick, and I've been a business and building owner for over 30 years on Forbes Avenue. I initially supported this proposed legislation, but I've changed my mind. I agree with you, Councilwoman Kraus, that this zoning change is overwhelming, and I request more time for further review by City Council. I wanted our support, growth, change, and increased height so Oakland can compete nationally, but this zoning proposal was too complex for me to support it today. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. Our next registered speaker would be Andrew Molnar. Forgive me. Do we have Andrew? He is not on. How about Mary McKenzie? Yes. Hi, Mary. Welcome. You are our next registered speaker wishing to offer comment in opposition of the legislation.
Yes, I'm really not in opposition, Councilwoman, of the Oakland plan itself. I have had the pleasure and honor of working on the committee that formulated the Oakland plan, but I am very concerned about extending the IZO to the Chelmsford Farms. I'm a resident of Chelmsford Farms. I'm on Lytton Avenue. I've lived in Oakland for 45 years, starting out as a Pitt student in 1962 and raising my family of four children here. And I just think that Chelmsford Farms is a jewel in Pittsburgh's crown and should be preserved by the city for future families, which is currently how it is owned. And I want to express my support for both the testimony of Norm Cleary and Rod Squires. And that is all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Mary, thank you for taking the time to be here today. I appreciate it. Mr. Shulley, you appear to be our last registered speaker. Pardon me? Okay, I'm going to go with the list as I have it. Mr. Shulley, are you here? Is Mr. Shulley on? No? Okay, we'll come back to Mr. Shulley if he should join us. So, Madam Clerk, help me out here. Let's go back over the list to those who may have joined us that were not here previously. Okay, let's start there. Number which, please? 13? Okay, David, are you with us now? He is not. He has his hand raised. The world of innovation and technology. I miss people. I miss people terribly, just being here all together. David, are you with us? I'll try again. Who else, Madam Clerk? That's it? Jody? Jody Lincoln was 15. Jody, are you with us? Okay, so I will, for the time being, close the list of registered speakers. Open it up to anyone else in the audience, I don't think so, who may wish to offer comment at this time. Okay, that would conclude the speaking portion of the public hearing. I will open it up to members if they wish to offer comment at this time. I'm sorry, Alex, forgive me. Who came on, Alex? Oh, David. Hey, David. You're with us. David Brennigan.
I didn't get the invitation to speak. This is Dave Brennan. I'm the Executive Director at Lawrenceville United and a former Oakland resident myself, and just wanted to support our neighbors in Oakland for the expansion of inclusionary zoning into Oakland. I've talked about this a lot, but I just want to remind the council that we're in a housing crisis with the expiration of rent assistance funds and the expiration of eviction moratorium. We're in the midst of a large upsurge in evictions right now. We need solutions to address this crisis. IZ is a modest, proven, effective policy used all across the country for decades. It was a key recommendation of the city's Affordable Housing Task Force. Local stakeholders and national experts modeled an appropriate policy for Pittsburgh, which, again, recommended a 10% affordability requirement citywide and even 15% in strong-market neighborhoods. And we know in Lawrenceville, this policy is already working, as well as in other neighborhoods covered by the ordinance. Within the last couple of months even, we've had two major projects come across our desk that will be advanced in Lawrenceville soon, like subject to the requirement. We've heard time and time again that this is, from developers themselves, saying this is a modest policy, a reasonable policy, that will not stop development. And I think it's good to have this expanded to other neighborhoods, so we're offering consistent expectations across the city for developers, which makes all of our work, I think, easier. And I want to recommend that the city, you know, follow the recommendations in past inclusionary zoning citywide. And then the last point I just make in response to some other comments about, you know, the voluntary versus mandatory. This has been well-studied across the country. Voluntary policies are already in place here in Pittsburgh. I don't think they've been exercised very often, so, again, we're in a housing crisis. That is the reason why we need to have a mandatory policy. We have solutions that actually help to address the problem, and we should take advantage of those because we know this policy really does make a difference. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, David. Alex, are you telling me we've had someone else? Oh, Jody Lincoln? Jody, are you with us?
Yes, hi. Thank you, Councilwoman Kraus. My name is Jody Lincoln. I use sheer pronouns. I'm a resident of Bloomfield, but a former resident of Oakland. And from 2017 through 2021, I managed affordable apartments in Oakland. During that time, I saw firsthand every single day the huge demand and limited availability of affordable housing in Oakland. So I'm speaking on behalf of the inclusionary zoning overlay for Oakland. Our waiting lists were hundreds of people long, and there were a few other places in the neighborhood with apartments that had less than market rate rent and were appropriate for non-student or accepted sectionally dependent-based vouchers. Oakland is a rich neighborhood with major transit routes, important cultural institutions, and lots of employment and opportunities. It is a neighborhood that not just students want to live in, but it's difficult for families, working people, and even long-term residents to find affordable and appropriate housing. The Oakland plan specifically identifies this and was intentionally designed to make inclusionary zoning possible as one of the strategies to address this. While we missed out on opportunities to create affordable housing with many of the new developments Oakland has seen over the past 10 years and in neighborhoods like the Strip District, which has seen a boom of new construction, multifamily development, the new zoning regulations are opening up Oakland to much-needed high-density construction, and affordable housing needs to be a part of these projects. We know it works. We know that they're still going to build these buildings with the IZ overlay, so let's make sure we're building with opportunities for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Jody, thank you. Okay, we will now close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Turn it over to members if they do wish to make a comment, although Deputy Director Dash appears wishes to add something.
Maybe just one clarification. There were a number of comments relative to notice, and just, you know, procedurally, want to make the, make sure that anyone who, you know, there were the people that were into the three new zoning districts, which received one notice. They received a notice that their property was being proposed to be rezoned to one of those three new districts. For residents of, or property owners in Oakland that were not part of one of those areas for those three new districts, they received a notice around solely the inclusionary zoning, whereas, you know, people that were getting rezoned for both. So just to provide some clarification on that note, and, you know, all property owners did receive that notice. I know there were comments around specific, you know, for example, Pitt not receiving notice, we didn't check. They did receive notice for both the changes in the inclusionary zoning and the changes to the zoning districts. So, you know, just wanted to make sure that procedurally, you know, obviously there are questions that we can ask around content, but procedurally, notices did go out, and that was to some of those points of, you know, just to provide some clarification to those points of notice. That's why there were two different notices that went out, and some people only received the inclusionary zoning notice because their properties were only being changed by the addition of the inclusionary zoning overlay.
Appreciate it. So it just begs to the subject matter briefing for members that need to incorporate, understand the process, understand the responsibility and the possible impact of decision that we're making. This is a massive undertaking, and I knew it was going to be big, but even, I have to admit, I'm overwhelmed by what I was presented with today. So I, again, will work with the clerk to schedule zoning staff to meet with the members of, that represent Oakland in complete keeping with sunshine and our responsibility there, but just to understand more what we are asking to do, the decision we're asking to make, and the repercussions and the responsibility that we're undertaking by making that decision. Did members wish, Councilwoman Gross, do you wish, and Councilwoman Strasburger, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to ask some questions that I don't necessarily need the answers to today, but I just wanted to say that, kind of like the presentation, and then some of the, I think, parts that are in this zoning proposal, bring back questions that I have about my own district and kind of this, our desire to increase affordability, but also to manage densification and align with transportation projects and do the kind of work that city planning, that's why we have a Department of City Planning. So I have some questions. But first, I would like to say that, and you can clarify me if I say this incorrectly. The inclusionary zoning overlay, which I introduced to council and planning helped us write for over a year and has managed that process first for Lawrenceville and then the expansion to Bloomfield and Polish Hill. I just want to say that, you know, while there are some thresholds that trigger it, notably especially that it has to be a project over 20 units, I have experienced it, I think, almost entirely as new construction. That might not be true for the very small project that involved several units of ownership, right, that were condos that I think might have been a historic renovation or a renovation of an existing building. But so as an example, there's a very large site that everybody knows at 40th and Butler Street, right at the 40th Street Bridge, that was bought overnight, overnight. That 13 acres of Lawrenceville, 12 and 3/4 acres of Lawrenceville was owned by one person and sold overnight to one company based out of Indianapolis. Because Wall Street, this is a quote from them to me, "Wall Street gave us $100 million. We analyzed every census tract in the United States, and we only want to buy and build in Lawrenceville." And then, boom, overnight, they bought 13 acres of Lawrenceville, a very significant site, right across from Arsenal Middle School. They proposed to proceed in three phases. When they did the first phase, there was a really huge outcry, four large community meetings of about 100 people each, really pushing for that developer to include some affordable units, just vaguely, right? This is the beginning of kind of affordability awareness, really heightened awareness about affordability issues in Lawrenceville. I'm talking back 2017, 2016 maybe, even when it started. And they just said, no, no, thank you. And so they built the first phase that faces Arsenal Middle School, so a real front facing on Butler Street. They built 250 units with all luxury rent. So then we had begun working already on the inclusionary zoning legislation, and we got that overlay enacted for Lawrenceville. And so when they built their Phase Two of 350 units, that is now leasing up with 35 affordable units integrated into the building, same building, same units, but with just some income screening for those 35 units. It's not retroactively applied to the first building. So that first building of 250 units is still a building of 250 luxury units. And so I just want to make sure that the kind of the listening public doesn't think that entering into the inclusionary zoning overlay somehow retroactively applies to existing buildings. It does not, right? So it's only new construction, whether it's a significant renovation or brand-new construction on an empty space, it applies to those new construction units. So I just wanted to say that, and so thank you for nodding your head, Director, as I said that, as hopefully clearly and accurately as I could. But listening to the discussion and now for months and really, you know, us all having to vote on behalf of this rezoning in Oakland, also calls to mind a kind of open-ended question that I haven't been able to answer with my staffing resources because I'm famous for asking a lot of questions well beyond the capacity of my three very busy staff people to answer. And I would just really like to see, and I'm sure you guys probably have it at your fingertips, or GIS does, a kind of population density map, and especially population density changing over time. So I've had probably 2,000 residential units built newly constructed in the Strip District in the last six, seven years. in the last six, seven years, of course, all luxury rent, where there was no one living mostly before, in the warehouses and areas, train yards or some, et cetera, on the riverfront. There's also been 1,200 brand-new units added in Lawrenceville proper in the last 10 years. I just got a spreadsheet from the Director of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. Thank you, Director Kinter. She emailed me this morning. And as you heard some testimony, there's another building proposed at another 300 units up at McCandless and Butler, which is kind of a previous warehouse area, et cetera. So, that, the construction increases at a steady pace, even with the inclusionary zoning. But I think, I had the impression that the densest population in my district is in Ninth Ward, Bloomfield, where there are no high-rises, there is no new construction, there's no 350-unit apartment building that has plopped down, but there are teeny-tiny townhouses, all crammed in side by side. And it's my impression that that little part across the street from Children's Hospital, when you've crossed into Bloomfield and you're on Friendship Avenue, and you can, you don't know, you never even turn in those streets because it's almost like Venice, they're like little diagonal streets. If they were cows, it would be like Venice, has a population density, again, this is my impression, my recollection from the 2010 census, that that's a population density of about 15,000 people per square mile in that little patch. So, I think I would like to see proof that our new construction, no matter how tall, like what densities are we achieving? And to see, there, so, look at existing densities. I looked at the density map in last year's discussion of that kind of quadrant of Oakland that, you know, parts of these proposals are for, and it's, I think, nearly that high right now. And so, I believe that in places where we have some of this new construction, we're not actually increasing density unless it was like on an empty train yard or something previously. So, if you could get that for us, I think it would be, it would be educational for me, and it's, I've been long, I've had this open-ended question that I haven't been able to answer. And then, thirdly, I really was, I had the exact same question at one of your renderings that one of the callers did. When I looked at it, I thought, that rendering is called an elevation rendering, because it shows a sideways view of buildings to see how tall they are, and I thought, but that's why that site isn't level. The rendering is level, as if, as if the land was level, but it isn't. And I think it would be helpful to see how it would really look. And I, of course, I have a very steeply sloped district as well, so, in the future, especially for big projections of large pieces of the city, it seems like it would be better to have a rendering, if it's possible to do before the briefings, incorporating topography.
Yeah, and I can respond to that last point. I think the earlier points you, you know, are all ones that I think you were just providing clarification, if anything else, and, you know, obviously some more information that planning can provide to you all. In many of the schematics that you, that were shown, we actually did include elevation change in there. There is really the main elevation change that is in the areas that were asked by the Planning Commission for additional study. You know, we're in kind of that area between Halket and McKee Place in central Oakland, and in that area, it is, some of the blocks are generally flat, and the one main change in elevation is between Coltart Avenue and McKee Place, where there is about a 15-foot rise in elevation. And we did incorporate that and show that into the elevations that were included in the council packet, as well as the elevations that were included in the presentation.
So, when we get to the briefing, I can ask that question again, and you can show me what I'm looking at, and that would be helpful. I appreciate it. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too look forward to a robust discussion and Q and A at the briefing, because there is a lot here.
Yeah.
And I also wanted to thank all of the speakers who came out, all the people who offered public comment, because even in listening and taking lots of notes today, I've learned a lot about what, where the community is on many of these zoning amendments and proposals. Generally speaking, I am, you know, I recognize that Oakland is unique because it is a downtown. It's the second, it's the third-largest downtown in the state of Pennsylvania, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, right, behind Philadelphia and Pittsburgh's downtown. And it is a residential neighborhood, right? It is both. So, so, it is, it is unique, you know, the Oakland Plan recognizes that it is a unique situation, and our zoning amendments need to as well. So, I look forward to delving into these details and I think, you know, discussing some changes that were recommended today, and, and seeing, you know, the extent of the changes that are necessary. But I am, in general, in favor of slowing down the process to some extent so that we can really work through these details and make the changes that are necessary. Specifically, I am in favor of inclusionary zoning. I am, I recognize that this sort of question around historic preservation is one that exists in the district, and I'd like to just explore that more. But generally, very much in favor of inclusionary zoning, very much in favor of density along our transit corridors, especially when it comes to the need that we recognize for additional office space, commercial, retail on those corridors, and to allow then for perhaps lower density elsewhere in Oakland for residential, where those who have lived, long-lived in lower-density, you know, low-rise areas of Oakland want to preserve that. So, a lot of nuance here, a lot of detail that we're going to delve into, that I know many people have been sort of, you know, clearing the grass, walking through the weeds for years now. We're now here as city council members, and I look forward to having those conversations and making these changes that are necessary. Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman, thank you. So, I'm not going to offer comment, per se, today. I think I stated pretty much my thought processes on the need for briefing for members to comprehend and understand the responsibility of the decisions we're undertaking here. I am also not going to adjourn this public hearing today. I'm going to recess this public hearing, so that as discussions take place, if there are amendments to the legislation, that we will provide opportunity for additional public comment, even though you may have spoken today as chair of this hearing. I will exercise my purview to permit those to come back and repeat if they have additional comments, should we have the need to have additional public hearing. But I don't want to just close this in case there are changes that would necessitate hearing once again from the public for the changes that are being considered. So, with, Councilwoman, sure?
I apologize. Could anyone here at the table speak to the calendar or the clock that we're on?
Yes and no both. And Director, perhaps you can help us understand this a little better. I have two conflicting conclusion dates, and I'm not 100% sure as to what we might be obligated to.
I am trying to look that up right now. I don't know if Kate, who is on the call as well, might be able to access that more quickly than I can. But we will, you know, if we cannot give you an answer in the moment, we will definitely, we will definitely give you an answer.
I'd rather have an accurate answer.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, I can give you an accurate answer. So, city council shall hold a public hearing within 120 days of the Planning Commission's action on the application, unless the applicant has agreed, unless we've agreed to extension of time, and that will be October 15th of 2022. So, that's just for the public hearing.
Yeah. So, we have, we have held the public hearing within the 120 days that are, that are required by the ordinance.
But then we have a voting clock as well.
Yeah, there are, maybe that's why I have two times, that have been discussed with me, and I don't fully comprehend or understand, but if I, if I am understanding correctly, council is afforded a 90-day window from this date to complete this legislation?
Kate, is that correct on the decision process? I'm trying to look it up on the code, on the code while, while we're, you know, while we're here, but.
Corey's here. He'll save the day.
Yeah. So, the administrator, I mean, does it make a difference whether they close the public hearing or not today, as long as it's closed by the October date?
Yeah. I think, I think we're really looking for, so, this is a, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. This is a city planning-initiated zoning tax amendment, and the, you know, there's the requirement for the hearing and the timing there, but as Deputy Director Dash mentioned, there is an opportunity for the applicant to agree in writing for, to record an extension of time. The same thing applies for, I believe, for the city council, sorry, not the city council hearing. So, I believe that we, that we can just extend, we can agree in writing to extend it, and, you know, I think that we're okay on the, on the hearing clock. I think if you're leaving open the hearing technically, then it hasn't concluded, but we can review with law, just to be completely sure.
But for this moment in time, we're not obstructing anything in any way by keeping the hearing open.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And, you know, at least until that October date, and like I said, that we can check with law if that's, you know, and, you know, as the, you know, applicant in this case, you know, that we need to provide some extension, if it goes beyond that date, and, you know, then, you know, the 90 days between the hearing and the decision by city council, we can verify those dates as well, whether today is the beginning of that 90-day clock or the conclusion of the public hearing is the beginning of that 90-day clock. And we can respond to you and the other members, and make sure that you all have that information.
With, with the depth and breadth of, of the information we are being asked to consider, I just think it would be disservice to those we are affecting by our decision to not offer opportunity to submit additional comments, should that become necessary.
Yeah, and we're definitely more than willing to meet with you all and provide more background clarification and all of those things, Councilman, because absolutely understood on the kind of scope of this zoning amendment compared to many.
Pack of lunch. All right. All right. So, Councilwoman, yes?
Well, I, you know, I think Councilwoman Gross and I still had a question about whether there is a deadline for voting, for action.
Or a demention.
That's, that's the 90 days that I spoke of.
From today.
So, there's 120 days to hold the public hearing, and the outstanding question that we will get a response to you all is, you know, whether that 100, you know, whether today satisfies that 120 days or if that 120 days is the conclusion of the public hearing, because we don't, we don't have a clear answer there.
That would be like the 90-day clock would start.
But, yeah, and then the other.
Start now or does it start later?
That's the other part.
Got it.
And that was the other part that I had noted, was that that 90-day clock will get confirmation as to when that starts for city council to make a decision. Again, as the zoning administrator stated, with either 120-day clock or that 90-day clock, there, you know, there is and can be an option where that's extended by both parties, you know, being, you know, the Department of City Planning introducing the amendment and city council. So, you know, I think that.
They are the applicant, and so, they can offer extension.
Yeah. So, we will, we'll get confirmation on all of those in, in review with, with the Law Department and make sure that that comes to city council as early as we can.
Appreciate it, yeah. And just to clarify that, the desire for additional time to digest is not to obstruct in any way, it is to understand the responsibility of the decisions we're making, and that the council will commit to completing this in a timely manner, but with full understanding of the decisions we're making.
Yeah.
Okay? This is great. So, with that, may I call for a motion to recess this public hearing?
So, there.
Second, all in favor? I, we are recessed. Thank you all.